Okay, we're calling to order the October 7th General Government Committee meeting. First up, we need to approve the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Support.
We have a motion by Pulaski, support by Snell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, passes unanimously. Agenda approved, do we move on to item three, public comment? Anybody, public comment? No public comment today. Move on to item four, committee items. The first up is our minutes from last month. Need a motion and support to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Support?
Supported by, or motion made by Walls, supported by Pulaski. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on to item B, it's the committee appointments. Okay, this will be for the Materials Management Plan Committee. We'll do them one by one, it's, we got a bunch of them. Solid Waste Disposal Facility Operator. It's a new term, it expires in 10 of 29. Jim Grant has applied. Do we have any other applicants from the floor? Then I'll move, we recommend Mr. Grant to the committee. To forward him to the full board. The recommendation. Can I get a support?
Support.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Grant will be forwarded to the committee. Be our committee recommendation. Next up, we have Representative.
Take a call.
Oh yeah. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. We have next up Representative of the Hallers. Same term expires 10 of 29. We have three applicants. Shalinda, Sheldon Messner, Curtis Comet, and Steve Walters. Any others from the floor? Okay, how we vote on this? You gonna run the vote?
Your main nominations?
Yeah.
Nominate anybody who they want?
Well, I read them off.
You got me to run a vote.
No support. I'd nominate Sheldon Messner. Didn't get a second.
I'll support.
Okay.
You got a second?
Okay, all in favor.
Also said, did you hear me?
What's that?
Did you hear me say you got a second?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor? All in favor, indicate aye. Those opposed, passes unanimously. What about the other two?
There's only one nomination.
Yeah, okay. Next up, Material Recovery Facility Operator. We do not have an applicant for that position. Waste Diversion, Reuse and Reduction Facility Operator. We have one applicant, that being Steve Noble. You have any others from the floor?
Nominate Steve Noble.
Steve Noble's nominated. I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Steve Noble will be the committee recommendation. We have Environmental Interest Group. Jane Trivaro Myers is the only applicant for that. Do we have any from the floor? If not, I'll nominate her. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We have her. Okay, elected official of the county. We have two. Tony Bear and Steve Shotwell. What will be your pleasure?
Nominate Shotwell.
Okay, buddy.
Nominate Tony Bear.
Real call vote, please.
Shotwell.
Pulaski.
Shotwell.
Willis.
Shotwell.
Snell. Duckham.
Shotwell.
Shotwell passes.
Shotwell will be our recommendation. We have still seeking out elected official of a township. We have no applicant, elected official of a city or village. We have no applicant, representative of a business that generates managed material. We have no applicant. And Region Two Planning Commission Representative, we have no applicant for that yet. Okay, move on next to Land Bank Authority. Commissioner position, current position is held by Darius Williams. And Darius is reapplied.
Nominate Williams.
I'll second that, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, passes unanimously. City Representative, Commissioner Willis. And he is our only applicant for that position. I'll nominate John Willis. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, the same. Township Representative, we have one, that'd be Pete Jensik. He is reapplied. As our only township representative, I'll nominate Pete Jensik. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None, passes unanimously. Then we have public member on the construction end of things. We had Tim Golding. He has not applied, so we'll have to re-advertise for him. We have no applicant for that, unless there's somebody from the floor.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Can we ask staff to email Mr. Golding? I think he might not have been aware that his term was up.
Certainly. Staff will contact Mr. Golding by email. Then we have the Employee Retirement System Board. The general position appointed by the Board of Commission. It's vacant. Currently, we have a Danielle Paquette is applied. Any motion from the floor?
I'll nominate Paquette, and then I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just verifying, this is the vacancy created by the retirement of the NISO ones, is that right?
It doesn't tell me that.
Correct.
Correct.
Just want to make sure I understand what you did there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of Danielle Paquette?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. That's the end of our appointments. Next month, we don't have any at this time, other than seeking out applicants for the open positions. Next up, we have Register the Deeds, the 24 Semiannual Report.
Good morning.
Good morning. It is definitely a Monday morning.
Beautiful and wonderful.
What's that?
It's beautiful and wonderful.
Absolutely. Do it with a smile. All right, so I submitted our report, our semiannual report, for your review. For transfer tax, as of the end of August, we're up to 73.48%. So that's, that's a really good projection come towards the end of the year. Other revenues were about 62%. I have noticed with our interest rate finally adjusting a little, that things have increased. Our land search, our copies and all that have increased, so yay, revenue. Documents were just a little bit up since this time last year, about 272 documents more. Fingers crossed. However, on the negative side, Sheriff's Deeds, we have 18 more at this time, as the same as time as last year. With that said, with a little tidbit of information, we haven't collected redemption fees for, at the county level, since 2018 was the last time. I've had three this year. So where people are trying to redeem, the purchaser's affidavit that's in the sheriff's deed, the people are not responding to the people trying to redeem, so they're coming to the county to redeem. So we're collecting those monies. And then upon the recording of the redemption certificate, we're allowed to release those monies to the grantee from the sheriff's deed. So, just to give you a heads up, we're a little busy, a little busy trying to remember laws that we have not had to.
Speaking of things that we haven't had to do, would you explain that real quickly to the Board, Sheriff's Deeds, and then Redemption?
Okay, absolutely. All right, so in the document, when a person goes into mortgage foreclosure, a sheriff's deed is recorded. They have anywhere from six months to 12 months to redeem the property. Part of the recording requirement with a sheriff's deed is a purchaser's affidavit that gives a per diem, per day, it gives you the total dollar amount, the per diem, per day, interest and whatnot calculations. If they choose to have a designee to contact to okay the dollar amount that they figure, they can also charge a fee. If the persons are reaching out to this designee and they're not responding to them, they still have the option to redeem here at the county. And we can take that right up to midnight of the last day of redemption. And so when we take it in, we don't calculate any numbers, that's all on the parties themselves. Any attorney's fees, interest and all that, we do not calculate it. That is not on the county's end. We can accept the money. We then send out certified letters out to all parties that we have received these monies on such and such day. After the recording of the redemption certificate, we can release those monies where they direct us to send that check to. Out of the three, I've had one that we've done the complete redemption. And I believe that one was a little over $179,000. So. Any questions on that?
So when you redo the redemption, the one you did, the original owner is the one who still owns the property, right?
Correct.
Yes, just making it clear.
Yes, he redeemed his property. And so the person who bought it at the sheriff's sale is the one that we sent the monies to. The redemption certificate was recorded, therefore the person who was foreclosed on still has their home. You're welcome. Any more questions on Sheriff's Deeds? All right, we're here to educate.
Need a motion and a second?
Who to receive?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good morning.
You must had a good trainer. Okay, we'll move on to.
Next item, Region Two Planning, Engineer's Deed. Who's here? Say, Region Two is a correction by Brett.
Want to give them a quick review and then we'll go?
Yeah, good morning, everyone. My name's Brett Gates, I work with the Region Two Planning Commission. So provided in the meeting agenda, there is a letter that we wrote to the Jackson County Board of Public Works that went before them on August 19th, recommending approval of the proposed vertical expansion of the McGill Road landfill. So in this review, we reviewed the letter that was addressed to the County Drain Commissioner, three maps that were provided, and the citing criteria and process contained within the 2016 amendment of the 1998 update of the Jackson County Solid Waste Management Plan. So based upon the review of these materials, we concluded to recommend approval of this expansion. And there's a whole analysis provided in this letter as well, where we reviewed the solid waste management plan and found that everything that they're proposing to do was consistent with that. So if you have any questions over this, please let me know.
And I'm sorry, I don't remember your name from your waste management, right?
Paul Mazanek, engineer for waste management. And I guess I could just field any questions anyone might have.
Yeah.
I understand. Okay, do I have a motion? Move to adopt the staff recommendation.
Motion by Pulaski, support by Snell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. You got her. Thank you.
This will go to full board.
Yes, that, we'll go forward. It is a.
As a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, yeah. Go to the full board next Tuesday. Okay, we have item 6E, Finance. Welcome, Cecilia.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I am here to go over and fill any questions regarding the August 2024 financial statements. As you can see on page one with our benchmarks, eight, we're eight twelfths of the year. We look at the benchmark of 66.7 and just see where we are with our revenues and our expenditures. Our year-to-date expenditures are, is below the 66.7, we're at 65%, which is a positive number. And then our year-to-date revenue percent total, 44.9. It is a little bit below our three-year revenue average of 47.8. But like I had mentioned last month, there are revenues for the last three years where we receive COVID reimbursements that we don't have for this year. So that's kind of why it looks like our revenues are below where we should be. But looking at our budget, we are where we should be for August of 2024. Are there any questions regarding our financial statements?
Go ahead.
Hi, Cecilia, do we, do we know yet where the, how the fair turned out for this year?
Right now, it looks like there was like roughly about $100,000 profit, or revenues less our expenditures, so it was a positive.
Revenues over expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I had, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pulaski. Any other questions? Okay, need a motion to receive?
Move to receive.
Support.
A motion by Pulaski, supported by Walls. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you much. Do you have a second part? No, okay, no, equalization. Good morning, Joseph.
Good morning. All right. Well, it's time to get that apportionment report approved. Real quick, I'll go over, just in case anybody forgot what that's about. I know it's not something we all deal with every day. But basically, the Equalization Department on behalf of the commissioners has to look at every millage rate that anybody wants to levy and make sure that if it needed to be reduced, it was. And us bringing this report to you guys is to say, we checked them, we looked at them all, they, everyone calculated them correctly. And now with your guys' approval, everyone will be allowed to levy their maximum allowable, or less if they wish. If we want to, you know, the quick breakdown of that report is, the beginning of it is the stuff that the state wants to see. You can see that that's broken down, it's kind of small, it's hard to read. And then further on, it's actually broke down by the townships. I like to do that so the townships can gain something from this report. It also, it's a real nice breakdown of revenue for school districts and everyone else to kind of see where their funds come from. Everybody got their stuff in, we're ready to reduce. The only caveat I have is that we are required by MCL 21137 to approve this in October. But if a millage gets approved in November, we will then have to revise. And there are three entities that are going for a millage that will affect 2024's rates. The county is one of them. Napoleon Township is going for a road millage. And North Adams Public School is looking for a sinking fund. So if any three of those pass, I'll have to come back next month and we'll have to revise this before they're all submitted by December 1st. Anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Pulaski.
Thanks, Joseph. I'm looking at page 18 as simply an example.
Okay.
And it, what I'm really focusing on are the various millages that the county has, operating medical care, senior services, life ways parks, animal control. The operating millage is what I'm particularly curious about, because it's at 5.066 mills. But I think our voted millage is something along the lines of six mills, more or less.
Yes, the allocated millage that is, would normally be allocated before the reduction is six mills.
Six mills. And so it's what, the headly reduction that has taken six mills over the years down to 5.066 mills?
Correct. All headly reductions are permanent. So when they occur without the vote of the people, they go on perpetually reduced.
And the only way to, to go back to what has, what was voted in the past is to have a headly override vote of some sort by the people?
Correct. And you can vote that to go back to the six, but you can also just ask for, bring us back to 5.5 or whatever. You don't have to go all the way to that six, it can be done many ways. But there are many counties that do that, yes. And townships. Because the same thing with the townships, they're allocated one mill. Most of them are reduced at this point. To your page, Blackman there is at 1.8. So they've also been reduced from that one mill down, so.
In your experience, have counties had headly override votes?
Yes, quite a few. Quite a few of them do it very succus, succus, I believe Lenoir was the, is the one that does it most consistently. But up north, it's quite frequent too. So you'll find that most of, a lot of the ones up north will continue to do their operating instead of doing other add-ons.
In other words, as we have, we have a half a dozen other add-on millages.
Correct. So instead, the counties, Mason County was where I was prior, they would do, they would refill that if they needed a 0.25 instead, so that they wouldn't have to put a time gate on that.
Yeah.
So that would go perpetually increasing them by 0.2, 0.3. And then they wouldn't, they don't have to worry about that millage falling off in 10 years or 20 years or whatever they put on the ballot language.
Well, and often in other counties, you have some folks that live there, but many who do not, many who are not, who are paying taxes, but who are not, most relevantly, voters in those counties, right?
Yeah, Mason County was specifically known for that, because we're on Lake Michigan. We had a lot of residents who lived not in the state even. A lot of them lived in Chicago, Illinois. So, yeah, and they were directly.
Very convenient to tax somebody who doesn't get to vote in your county.
Yeah.
Yes.
For lack of a better term, yes.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry, I'm being a little facetious. But that's, I'm trying to understand, you know, thinking about the, we're getting, the jail millage is, is on our ballot. And a jail is one of the most fundamental things that a county runs. It's one of its most basic functions. And here we are having to arrive at a millage to attempt to support it in the manner in which it's become accustomed. And I'm just thinking about future taxation policies here. That's all I had, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? You had one, right?
No. And I'll move this. I'll support.
Okay, moved to forward by Snell, supported by Pulaski. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes, let's forward, thank you. Okay, next up, next up, item H, IT.
Good morning. So as we brought forward at the study session, I've got the on-base software upgrade, leveraging ARPA funds to bring in a contractor to perform an upgrade of our software base that handles all of the document management for the organization and document retention, and provide the training to our staff on how to do that as well as part of it. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Everybody understand what we're doing?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt the staff recommendation, and if I can get a second, I have a question.
Sure. Okay, go ahead, Pulaski.
This is the $18,000 item that we discussed at study session, right?
Yes.
Just want to make sure I'm on the right page. Not that I would ever be on the wrong page, thank you.
Darius, did you have something? Okay. Any other questions? Okay, need a motion to receive? Going to the full board? Yeah. Motion and support. Who was the support? Okay. I can hear him.
Pulaski, Willis.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Pulaski, support by Willis. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Next up, we have the new tangics.
So in a traditional server environment, going back, you know, 10, 15 years, when you create a new server, you would buy a piece of hardware that was going to support and run that server. Going forward into the modern era of data centers, which Jackson County has been involved in since at least 2016, we've been leveraging something called virtualization, which allows us to run multiple servers on a smaller subset of hardware where they share the resources. And a system is put in place that manages that sharing. So we've had a couple of different ones over the course of the lifecycle of the various products. The one we're currently using was purchased in 2021 under ARPA funds, and that is the Nutanix product suite. So that is today supporting almost every server that is run at the county level. So roughly 100 servers at this point are running on that hardware. It also handles, excuse me, the framework that allows us to replicate our data set to an off-site over at Human Services Building, to where we have greater redundancy available to us. So that is literally the connective tissue that, that runs all of the servers and hardware and keeps everything talking to itself on the data side of the environment. So the initial purchase included both a hardware lifecycle, which is rated for six years, and it included three years of subscription to the software components of the product and support and maintenance of that for those three years. That is the portion that's expiring this year. We're moving forward with a single-year replacement, or renewal of the product suite instead of a full three years. Because as we've been examining it due to the high cost of that, it's, it is one of the core systems we support and operate, we've been making efforts to consolidate and optimize how we are using it in order to bring that cost down over time. So rather than lock us into a. So rather than lock us into a full three years for that renewal, we're going forward with one year, which we've already managed to reduce about 10% of the original ask on it in the hopes of being able to cut more out of it for next year in order to keep that cost reasonable for the remaining of, remainder of the hardware lifecycle. So if there are any questions about it at all, I'm happy to answer.
Questions, Ward?
I'll support, I got a question.
Okay, motion by Pulaski, Snell, seconded by Pulaski, and Pulaski has a question.
And I, if I recall, this one is a part of your kind of existing capital budget, am I right? Is this that?
Yes.
This one, okay. Not an ARPA thing, but just kind of normal standard operating costs?
Yep, this is the first time that we'll have paid for it outside of ARPA. So this is ongoing for the renewal cost, and it was budgeted for.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we had a motion and support. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next up, item I, the Fair Semiannual Report. Welcome, Denise.
Good morning. It's kind of nice feeling that we have a very, very nice, fun report, although Commissioner Pulaski might have jumped the gun just a tiny bit. But I do appreciate your excitement. So, just to reiterate, this was actually in last year's. We have a new collaboration that we do with the JSO in Jackson, and we're going to continue that. We have our holiday concerts that are going to happen in the ballroom at the December 20th and 21st. And then we have another concert two nights in February, which will be The Beatles. And the musicians, obviously, are four-string instruments from the JSO. And so, we're super excited. We had, our very first concert event was extremely successful. And, you know, we're, we're all about the revenue. And we were both happy that we made a good amount of money off that collaboration. And then, of course, we have the Beer Fest. And I'm not sure if everyone here has participated. I know we have a number that have been volunteers for the last number of years. But we, 13 years we've done this, and this was our biggest year. We switched over, or added, I should say, a number of local craft brewers. And we did that with the help of Jen and Dustin Ramsey, who own a company called Flowworks, because they're in these pubs all the time, sharing about the event, and they got excited. And so we added that, and that made, that made a significant difference. We netted about $45,000 for the event this year. So I expect that number just to continue to go up like it has every year. We did add spirits, which I was a little bit nervy about. But we have a number of craft brewers that are also distilled spirits. So we did add that. And we, we took a lot of precautions, but it was very successful. And every single one of them want to return. Takes over 110 volunteers to put this on. And I am not kidding, it takes 110 people to put this on just because when you're pouring samples in little cups, and you've got peoples in lines, and, and all the security part of it, where we're checking IDs and all that good stuff, it does take a lot of folks. But that's one of the events I have no trouble getting volunteers for. And then we do, every year, we have our Ag Day Project Red, which we did again this year. This was our biggest number, over 1,400 third graders were on our grounds. And it was great weather for the most part, little bit of rain here and there, but nothing like we've had in the past. And that is such a wonderful opportunity for these kids to come out and, you know, have the educational input of where their food comes from, and it's not Myers or Krogers in the cooler aisle. So they really enjoy it. And Farm Bureau is a huge person who participates, participates and initiates this. And if you haven't been involved in this at all, you really should come down because it's, it's worth, worth a couple of hours of just scoping it out. Just a few pictures. See the corn guy in the corner? He was a new addition this year. Huge. Really love the corn guy, so. And our Fair Week was the 4th through the 10th, which I have to say, you know, we, obviously, we all know we had some changes this year. And I was enemy number one for sure on Facebook. But I can tell you what resulted from this was an excellent Fair Week. And, you know, we, we provided exactly what I knew that we would be able to do. And we didn't miss music at all on the grounds because we had music every night in the hospitality tent. We did have a show, our Taylor Swift. Okay, I have to say, I had a lot of dads that had funny looks on their face when they came into this event. But at the end of the concert, there were over 200 people in line to get this little gal's signature, and she stood there for every single one of them. I've had some big names and never had those kind of, you know, meet and greet lines. So it was really, really great. And for a first concert for a lot of these young ladies, and we had some young men, they really enjoyed the heck out of it. So I think, I think that, you know, seemed to fit right into, to what we wanted to happen. We had a stage there, we had a stage presence. And it, it was, it was very, very good. I do have to give credit, Kyle kind of stalks these kind of acts. So he did see her initially. And so that's why we looked at her. I didn't say that. So this is just a sample, a few of the pictures of, of her stage. And so this was actually the Parks stage that we used. So we saved money there. The production part of it was really just the lights and sound and that kind of thing. So it was a much nicer production charge than what we've had in the past, by about $185,000, so. And there again, just talking about the hospitality tent, which was all of local brewers that came in and provided the libations for this. So that was nice. And again, the Ramses were a big part of this, of wanting to support this event. And so they were there all week. He works on draft trailers and that kind of thing. So he was there if there was any, any issues, which there were not. But I think we had a couple people that said that they would like to see music go a little later in the evening. So maybe in the future, that that probably will be one thing that they'll change. We couldn't do Fair Week without our sponsors. And we've been blessed to have a lot of sponsors for the fair. And this year, we exceeded what we had budgeted for sponsorship dollars, so that was nice. So, you know, the businesses in Jackson County know that the fair is a very, very positive event in Jackson. We've had, we had a number of new ones this year. Bobcat, the IEP steps right out because they, they contacted me. I didn't contact them. So that's nice. And with Tractor Pulls, we had some new folks that supported that, like Bud's All Tractors. He was very, very excited to see Tractor Pulls come back. This is just, everybody knows that Jackson County Fair has, has the reputation of beautiful grounds. And we've never, I don't think we've ever disappointed anybody. And yes, we used to be called the Flower Festival, and probably legitimately, we still could, just because of what happens on our grounds. The rose bushes especially. So we, we did, started out the same as last year. We had the rodeo on Sunday. And Monday, we did something different. It was a free event all day Monday, for anyone that wanted to come in. And it was called All Things Horses. We started out, we moved our draft horses to show in the grandstand. A lot of people didn't realize that we showed the draft horses. They don't know where they're at because they were kind of hidden. Well, this year, we put them in the grandstand. And that was a kind of a real welcome addition. And we ended up having a six-horse cart demonstration. And then at the, in the evening, we did pony poles, which I really enjoyed that. And they're not really ponies. I mean, they are because they're just right up until that size. But that was really exciting. And the, the amount of Amish folks that came to the fair, never, never had that before. And they're hoping that, you know, they'll be able to come back one day again. And I think Commissioner Bear, you were there in the stands with me. You, you participated in that. And due to the weather, which once again, weather, you know, was, was an ugly, reared its ugly head this year. And Tuesday was the, the main day because we had two and a half inches of rain. I had exactly 100 people come through the gate on Tuesday. So that hurt us a little bit. But even with that, and to be able to end with a fun balance, I think it speaks to the kind of show that we put on. But the Tractor Pulls, which was probably one of the most stressful, more stressful probably, even from bringing Toby Keith to the grounds because of what it took to get that set up. And the clay was one of the, the biggest things. But we, we brought in tons and tons and tons of clay from Monroe area. But it was donated by Stone Co., and so very generous of them. But anyway, it turned out to be, when the pullers were done at that evening, they said, finally, Jackson's done it right. Which, of course, I thought it was crazy to watch somebody, you know, pull dirt and, on dirt and have, all that kind of good stuff. But the, the farmers loved it. They absolutely will be participating in big numbers next year. So that, that, that is an event that will continue to grow. So these are just a few pictures of things that happened, and... Our FMX show was a little bit of a disappointment. But it, I thought it was absolutely fantastic. And I guess it was, it was bad that maybe we didn't market it the way that we should have because for what happened in the grandstands, it was super cool. So I was a little disappointed with that. That's one we bought at IFE, and they're an international touring company. But it was fun. And that's the Tractor Pulls. That's some of the dirt that they just started putting down. The birthing barn was also updated this year. And a huge shout out to the Neelises, Brandy and Randy Neelis. They put some money into the birthing barn, and they put some new excitement, brought some new animals in, and really took ownership of that. And we're excited to know that they want to stay as the leads on the birthing barn into the future. Our free acts this year, we got a few calls from some folks because one of the days that we had the rain in our camel show, well, camel and the 700-pound hog that was right on Ganson Street, I got a number of calls saying, why would you leave those camels out in the rain? Why, you know, that, that's terrible, that's mistreatment. Okay, what do you say to somebody like that, anyway? And I probably got 20 calls. So we explained to them that, you know, the, the folks that own the show, they're, they're very reputable, and they live right there with the camels. And the camels were fine. I'm sure they've been rained on in the desert at some point in time. But we also had the Ag Show, which was Dan Dan the Farmer Man. And that, that was, that was really fun. And we get a lot of families that sit and really enjoy the free shows. And they perform three days, or three times a day, and they were all well-attended. Our Fair Fun and Inclusion, which is our special needs day, was another big success. It's, it's really, we, I think we counted 47 buses that came in and dropped off in our West Lot for the participants for this program. And it's very heartwarming, it's very, very well-received. We raise money and donations so that all of the participants have T-shirts and so that we can pick them out. But our, our midway company works with us. Our 4-H folks want to participate in this. And we have, it, it takes, it takes a village to put this on and make this one of those events that now every year, they're going to, they'll contact. They have now. This is our, I think this was our fourth year where, to make sure that they can do that. But the midway company, we shut the fair down, don't even open it to the public till 1:00, and they come in about 10:30. And they have midway rides that are slower, without all the sound and the bells and whistles. And our food vendors always have specials for these folks. So it, it's a great day. Our young man, who happens to be my nephew, for years, has been the, we call it WJCF. He's the one who does all of the announcements. He's autistic. And it's, it's, he, he has grown so much with this event. But he's the reason that we knew that we had to do that. When I talked to the fair manager at Oakland County, he, he convinced me that, you know, hey, you really ought to do something like this. You're never going to want to turn back. And when, knowing that we have a situation in our own family, that, you know, it, it really hit home, and it, and it really was a success. And I'm sure that is something that will continue to happen. We added a historical, or we added to our historical walkthrough, which was our Centennial Farms and Sesquon Centennial Farms. And it's amazing how many we have here in Jackson County. We have several, I think 312 farms are, have one of those designations in Jackson County.
Denise, are we going to take a picture of Jim and put it up there?
Yeah, because he actually has one. Jim Vitato, they just got their designation a couple of years ago. And this is just the dates. Every, you know, usually our fair book comes out right around the 15th of May. And then our deadline for livestock entries is always that, that second Friday of June. Here's the important piece. Attendance was definitely down this year, but I think that not only the weather, and of course, you know, the concerts do play into that a little bit. But again, weather, and I like to note those days. But the, the third one, incident reports. We had no incident reports in regards to sheriff's office. If there's something that happens, I always get an incident report. We had a little scuffle over on one end of the American One Event Center. And, but that, that was, it was very small and very insignificant. 1,020 exhibitors, 3,844 exhibits, premiums, $31,700. And actually, it's a tiny bit higher than that because we had seven that we had to do a correction on. But, so it's probably 31,780. And the net for fair this year, it, it is low. It's conservative because we do have a grant that we'll have to do matching funds for. But the beautiful thing is, is we'll have the matching funds. So I think 60,000 is, is very conservative. It'll be higher by the time everything gets paid out at the end of the year. But most of the, I should say most, all of the big bills have been paid, and were paid on time this year. So feel good about that.
That is positive, yes.
It's very positive. And just, I just wanted to, my parting thoughts for the success of the fair. I do know that the responsible decision, it was a responsible decision to forego the big shows, and I believe there's a place in the county fair and in our community for many years to come. We are 170 years old this year, and our mission speaks as to how we achieve such longevity. And I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to know what the Administrator Controller or the Parks Department plans to do to get this message out about how positive our fair was this year versus all of the negativity we heard during Fair Week. I'd like to know how we intend to respond to all that and what we're going to use to, to do that.
Thank you. Actually, we have a number of things we're looking at right now. In fact, I just sent some stuff to perhaps create a, a new tool that we currently have, don't have, is like a app for our phone and things like that will allow us to push material out instead of just posting it. So there's a number of tools out there, as well as something we discussed before is, we need to, we need a communication person, to be frank. We'll see how the budget shakes out on all that. I don't know that we actually have the money, which has been our problem all along. But ever hopeful, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion by Pulaski. Support by Willis. To receive our report, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the same, pass unanimously. Okay, we go to J. Parks, our fair staffing reorganization.
Good morning. Yeah, with Denise retiring, we've taken a good look at our organizational structure and proposing a couple of changes here. We've gone through a pretty lengthy and productive process, I'd say, since the spring, since we posted Denise's position. We had a committee interview six candidates for the fair manager position. Worked closely with the county administrator and the human resources director. And what comes out of that is, we're recommending a little bit of a restructure, like I said, and you can see the changes on the org chart there. There's a current, and then there's a proposed. But essentially, for the fair side of, the first change here is to restructure and put the responsibilities of the fair leadership under our current business and facilities manager position, and to create an assistant fair manager position. So I think this really aligns well with streamlining the fair more into our existing events that we do with the Parks and the American One Event Center. And it still gives the same attention and maybe more to, to the fair. So cost-wise, you can see, actually, it's a savings of over, just over 16,000 annually compared to our current structure. Did discuss in, in this... Did discuss, and this was approved at both the Parks Board and the Fair Board. So that's kind of the first change proposed here today. The second, as you can see on there, we've got our last reorg in 2019. We had a capital projects manager position that was approved and proposed at that time. That was the first year of the park millage funding. We knew we were going to be doing a lot of projects with our new world of funding. 2019, we really spent a lot of time on community input and planning out projects. We kind of held off on filling that project manager position at the time. And in 2020, of course, we didn't do any projects as well. So we've kind of been operating with the park superintendent, taking on that responsibility of planning out our projects, putting out RFPs, working directly with the contractors. So that's kind of reflects how we've been operating, but I would say it's not in that person's job description. So this, as we were looking at the fair side of it, I worked with human resources to kind of look at the overall picture and clean up any other items that we had here. So this is the other result of that. So there is a little bit of an increase in that, but you know, but I would say, actually, you know, the alternative is to fill that capital manager position, which I don't, like I said, I'd rather just clean this up and put it in the superintendent position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of that.
Do we have any questions, Board?
Discussion.
If not, we need a motion and support to send this to the full board.
Support.
Moved by Snell, supported by Walls. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same? Motion move forward to the full board. Thank you, Kyle. We have item K now. Parks, Keighley Park Playground Purchase.
Yeah, so this is a playground purchase for Keighley Park. There's, you know, there's been talk on and off, I think, over the years for a playground. This is proposed to go actually where the former fair office used to be, right? When you come into the park there on the left-hand side. I think it fits in well with the master plan that was designed for Keighley Park, to have it more of a year-round facility, which, you know, obviously, we've done with the American One Event Center, and this just kind of tags on to that. This is fully funded by donation from Alro. So we basically analyze the different quotes by price, quality, references. We go out and visit playgrounds with the same company, if there's any in the area. And we looked a lot at theme for this playground as well. So we really wanted to have something that fit the history of the grounds, and obviously, with the fair being there, this is agricultural or kind of a barn-themed playground. But again, fully funded with the donation from Alro. This was approved at the park board with the addition that we also separately looked to add on with a piece of accessible equipment, which we are currently working on.
I have a question. I look at the layout there. What happens with that, all that playground equipment, when the fair comes in town?
It'll be a piece of the fair currently. This last year, we had some inflatables that were in that area that were kind of used for people visiting the fair. This, I think this basically adds to the fair and adds to when people are coming, well, really on a daily basis, but also for, you know, visiting each event each weekend. You know, kids can stop by before they get back in the car.
So be basically free, free fair activity?
Exactly.
Okay, cool.
Which I think is, you know, we hear a lot about the cost rise, you know, the fair admission. I think this helps with that, you know, it's one more.
Absolutely.
More thing to do while you're there.
All right, we're ready for a motion?
Move to adopt the staff recommendation.
Motion by Pulaski, supported by Snell. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. So it'll go to the full board. This must have been your idea?
What's that?
That was your idea, wasn't it?
Well, sort of.
I like it. Good idea. Okay, we'll move on to other business. Item five, the claims. We need to pay the claims. Motion by Snell, supported by Pulaski. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. There are no other minutes. Reporting scheduled next month. Finance and Upper Grand River Watershed Council will give their annual report. Public comment. Set on public. Committee member comments. Thank you all, Board. You did a great job.